All right, good evening. I'm going to open up the May 14th, Town Washington Town Council meeting. Brad Schneider is not with us tonight, nor is Terry Copel. And Mr. Bennett is traveling. The first order of business for the May 7th minutes. And the -- these were the meetings last week. Well, two weeks ago, when the Task Force meeting or control organization was. Any questions, comments, motion to approve?
I think we can proceed.
On favor? Aye. Okay. Treasuries report, this is me. The, for the month of April, town income, $24,000 and change. Waste water, you know, water works income, $6,300 approximately. Waste water income, $9,000 approximately. And our LGIP account, $47,000. $60,000 in union banks, so 466 is our total cash assets. Water usage gallons, pump, $150 approximately gallons. Pack wash, $34,000. Billable gallons, $115,000. Gallons billed, $592,000. Treated but not yet billed, $323,000. And the consolidated assets, the water works account was $22,000. Waste water is $89,000. In terms of bills. Is there anything on here, Laura, that? There's $10,000 through the fire department, which is a large number.
That's the grant.
That's the grant. We get 10, and then we pass it through to them.
Yes, the question is something.
Any questions? If not, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Planning Commission? Mr. Kaplan?
Planning Commission will not be holding its regular meeting for the month of May in recognition that that is Memorial Day, and all of us have better things to do with our time. Our next scheduled meeting is, I believe, it's Tuesday, June 19?
Tuesday?
I think so, on Tuesday. Do I have that wrong? It was going back and forth between, but I think it's Tuesday, June 19. But we will get some final confirmation on that one. And that is all that I had for the week.
The head of meeting, I think, last week. I have no idea what we're on here. No, actually, I do later on.
They approved your application.
The town attorney's not here. All right, let's open up the public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget. And before, so I'm opening it up to public, it's before, actually, not even a public speak, I'm going to say a few words, if you don't mind. Just to give you a sense of where we are year-to-date, this is not the budget, this is actual figures, year-to-date through April, which is nine months. Our revenue is $503,000 versus $490,000 last year, so it's up a very modest amount. Meals and lodging is pretty much same as last year, but we're up in water and wastewater. Roughly speaking, it's about the same number, a little bit above. On expenses, we are running $58,000 under last year. And the highlights of that are administration now increase, maintenance, $50-some-on-thousand dollars less than last year, and operations, a few thousand more. Legal fees, $8,000 less. So that totals up to essentially $58,000 less expenses than last year. For a P and L, if you will, somehow I think the word profit and loss really applies here, we're running a negative $27,000 through the first nine months versus a negative $90,000 last year. Last year did not include the sale of Elon Hall. In any of those numbers, I gave for last year. For the budget, let me call your attention to the budget summary. Single-page piece of paper that's handwritten. This is a summary of the eight-page, six-page, whatever, full budget, which we can happily talk about, but I always find the full budget kind of not always as easy to understand as it might be. So this is sort of a cheat sheet, if you will. Cheat, probably not the right word. As everybody knows, the town budget is divided into three categories: town, water, and wastewater. Going down the left-hand side of this list, this is the budget. We anticipate $365,000 in revenue this year, which is about the same as last year. Meals and lodging, we're keeping the same. Operational expenses of $143,000. So a quote surplus in the town account of $222,000. Because of water, $105,000 in revenue, $87,000 in operating expenses, so a net gain of $18,000. But then there is a $25,000 loan. So the net for the water system counting the loan is minus $7,000. Wastewater is where the big numbers are. $160,000 in revenue, $197,000 in operational expenses, so a loss of $37,000. And then our loan payment of $178,000. Annual loan payment. If you then look down to where it says transfer of dollars. The, out of the town account, $7,000 will be transferred to the water system to cover its loss. And $215,000 will be transferred to the town account to cover the operating loss of water system and the $178,000 loan. And then as required in these budgets, everything else, net sum. But this is sort of the big picture, and sort of the transfer of funds, if you will. With that, the actual budget we will have. If there is any questions, comments, thoughts, cash they want to give the town? We're pretty much the same situation we've been for last year, so we're getting benefit from raising the wastewater rates, which pretty much cover the water system, but they don't cover the wastewater. The loans and opposite, the big outstanding number. And the operating costs for wastewater systems are both volatile. We actually have a pretty good year so far. But that's the, if that's the, going forward, that's the tough, tough area. If not, close the public hearing. Excuse me. And the members of the council have any questions about the budget? Everybody's been involved, and it's not everything. The big, all right. All right, and I have a motion to approve the budget. Marianne makes the motion, for a second. Kaplan, the second. We probably should do roll call. Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next is a public hearing. Oh, Judy, it's your, okay. Public hearing to address the P and P, otherwise known as Airbnb. If the, could you members of the planning commission will be kind enough to come up and sit with us? And we'll open the hearing. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and open up the planning commission. And Town Force Meeting is open now.
Okay.
Right?
It says we open up the public hearing.
Okay, excuse me, yeah. So on behalf of town, the town will open up the public hearing, on behalf of town. Not very articulate, but I think people didn't like it. Public hearing for town, at the front of the Mission Town Council. Okay. You all have in front of us what is the most recent draft of the B and B ordinance. Actually, you should be doing this, right? Yeah, actually, you probably shouldn't.
We have the most recent, what would you say? We have the most recent version of the, the short-term rental agreement. This has been in front of the town council. It has been reviewed by the planning commission. It has received the review of the town attorney. And has come back to the planning commission that have noted and made their recommendations to, to the town council to approve this document, as it says, you, you, the town council.
The town council. Does the planning commission, actually, it's an open hear, it's a hearing, do you, does the public have?
Any questions?
Questions, comments? Mr., whoops, it's your meeting. Mr. Coog, on behalf of Mr. Kaplan.
I just wondered why there was no limit on the number of persons that could occupy any of these Airbnbs. We've limited the BnBs to two persons for each bedroom, but we have no limitation at all on the number of people that can, can be at one of these Airbnb houses.
Can we just look at what was enforceable?
I'm sorry?
Can we look at what was enforceable? And there are also requirements, if you're going to be in Airbnb and joining a group that does that for their business, and they have their own limits, but we weren't certain how is somebody going to stand outside and count the people going in and knowing that I have four bedrooms. But if I, the regulations from the Airbnb Association, we'll call it, are pretty strict on how many people you can have coming in.
And how does that apply to this?
One of the requirements that we put in there is that anyone who is going to have one of these, that needs to have current certification of good standing with an evidence of Airbnb or other reputable person, person, short-term rental agents. So there's a requirement that they need to be, needed to standard of these organizations.
And does that mean, Fred, that they necessarily have to book through Airbnb? Or can they just call Alex Smith and say, can I get a room?
I, I would assume, and Marianne, you're going to be a better expert, perhaps, than I am, but my guess is that each organization is going to have their own means by which they do this. Airbnb, I think you go through Airbnb.
Right.
But I'm not going to speak for every single reputable organization that might serve to certify or to credit an organization. Essentially, I think the point that Judy is making is that the town of Washington has certain limits in terms of human power available to it, and so many of these things would require someone, if we wanted to put in a lot of specific restrictions, we don't have the wherewithal to enforce them. And we thought it would be a better use of time if we required someone who was going to do the short-term rental to receive certification of good standing with one of the national, reputable national organizations.
And the health.
And that, right, and the health department for.
And I think, I think, Ray, you did also put in the point number seven about no assembly uses, if you were worried about crowds gathering or parties being held.
No, I understand that.
But I think the, the sort of modus operandi that we used was, if we can't enforce it, let's look to the rules of other organizations, be it Airbnb or Home and Away. Let's try and focus on what we can actually enforce.
Well, I don't think that.
There are some people with homes that perhaps then have two sets of bunk beds in a room, so a family wanting to come into that house would have four children in that room. And so we weren't trying to turn this into a B and B. It's a very short-term rental for a whole different group of people than BnBs.
Okay. I'm asking, two point one.
Go to that for a few weeks.
Yep. Too quiet.
What's your name?
Deb Harris. Why did the planning commission think that this was unenforceable for short-term rentals, and it is enforceable for BnBs? Because we are limited to a certain number within arms, and we're not often audited on it, but we stick to it. And I guess the second is, why is your, have you considered putting it in a special use permit, the limit of the number of people per rental? And that way, you're not limiting specifically for, like, if you have two bunk beds, four people, but you can limit by through the special use permit costs?
In fairness to BnBs, we're not limited to ten people. There could be scenarios where homes in the county could only be 15, 20 people. That is a disadvantage to BnB businesses.
I would argue that 15 and 20 people are probably not going to go through a BnB. And of course, we, we're not a part of the regulations for BnBs. If you would like to come in and ask for an amendment, I'm certain it would be considered. What we had before us was what had been backed up by the attorneys, and then we have looked at it over a number of months, going back and forth with the council.
I guess, sorry. Put me in second, here I am. Now, isn't it state breaking as far as BnBs and other people, wasn't it, like, at one time, they had four bedrooms and?
It's in our regulations, in our BnB regulations.
Oh, I don't think that.
If you have more than five rooms, then you're not a bedroom per person, not a country, and then you have to have sprinkler system and everything else, or you're a different kind of person. It's our regulations. But Deb, did something else to say?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I'm wondering why it's enforceable for BnBs, but not for short-term rentals, because there are not very short.
Just the number of people, generally, we are two rentals.
Yeah.
You're probably right, it's probably not enforceable for BnBs.
Well, we rely on good faith.
Yeah, well, yes.
And I think if, if there's a limitation by the National Airbnb Association for a number of persons, that it would be helpful if you had a number of persons in your local ordinance, so that when some neighbor complains and says there are 30 people staying at the house next door, you'd have some way to call that owner on the carpet and tell that either revoke their permit or have some sanction for that. We don't expect anybody on the council, or Laura, or whoever it may be, to go around and count people in bedrooms. But we know if there's a limit, that people will adhere to the limit.
If there are people who violate the rules of the association, they will lose their certificate of good standing and will eliminate them from being able to rent their property.
So you report it to the Airbnb national organization, and they, then they lose their good standing. But if you don't have a basis for saying there are more people here than the local ordinance allows, you have no footing other than to go to this national organization. And if they run it like Uber or Lyft or these people, they're not going to give a damn.
Yeah, I would like to spell something. I keep hearing that this Airbnb has a certification thing. They don't. Airbnb just wants your money, and they want you to book through them, but there's not, like, some police force that's, that's checking to be sure everybody's doing everything right. It's, it's.
No, they don't heavily test people, those sort of people, and things like that, because there are ratings, it's very competitive.
I'm a psych advisor.
It's a crap school, so.
Yeah.
All right, can I ask a question, such observation? These are all good, they're good questions. If the issue is how many people are in a building? If that is the issue. And in a way, whether it's one bedroom, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, or one of those back bugs or not, is, you know, you can come up with any combination. Would it make sense to say that there can be no more than X, whatever that is, number of people in, in one of these buildings? And, well, let's say six or something, whatever the number is, that's a number that we sort of, if you sort of thought, you know, if my neighbor were doing this, if there are more than six people in there, I'd flip out. If there are more than four, I'd flip out. If it was one bedroom or two bedrooms, it's sort of really not the point. Now, at the end of the day, if the rule says six people, and seven or six show up and gets a little kid that's as big as seven people, and there's a little, you know, little whatever on the side, it would be up to the, would it not be up to the owner of the building to enforce it? And if they didn't, over some period of time, I'm hypothetical, I'm just trying, I do, it would just become known, and we could say, you know, you're overdoing the, you're overdoing. But it does get you, you know, there's still, there's an issue of monitoring, does he act in monitoring? If at the end of the day.
We did have a lot of discussion about numbers of people, and not one size doesn't fit all. I mean, you say six people, and I've got two bedrooms, and now I've got six people where they're in a very tiny house, and it's very hard to come up with, whatever. We did say the owner had to be on the premises, so there is some accountability right there to follow a sudden crowd laws, to be able to go to the owner. I don't know if that's the mayor, or if that's.
Who would be the zone manager?
Yeah, and say, you know, we're going to revoke your permit. It's just that, I understand your concern, and we had a lot of discussion about, you know, what made sense. Because as they say, one size does not fit all.
I'm also, I think that they bring up a good point about the number of people. Unfortunately, Mr. Bennett is not here. I would have thought that if he would have had something in here, and the fact that there isn't something in here, I'm, I'm just questioning myself whether there is a legal reason that he did not put a number in here.
There wasn't a number.
There was a number.
Was there a connection? There wasn't, there was a long discussion around.
Because it acted.
It was, what was the number? It was two per room, not.
No, you could have, it wasn't quite that, because if you had three children, three, you know, it didn't work out. Again, it was a one-size-fill-all business.
I think you're, you're raising a point, is that it's very difficult to try and have a blanket policy for everything. And so it led us to try to, as much as we could, defer to other organizations to maintain the standards. And that's why we showed, we look to the standards of the health department, look to the standards of, credit in the organization.
Judge Mann.
I'm in favor of making it, but it should be processed. A condition.
That's what Drew.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not my vote, but we're going to say, as a member of the public, I would be in support of that.
Does that mean every time I want to rent a house, I have to?
No, no, it'd be part of your SGP that you have up to this number of people, maybe including so many children. That would be.
But how much does it differ from those?
Because this is a, it's different, because you're not being specific to any one place. And then, let's say someone rents out a house with three bedrooms in it. If you're SGP, you could say six adults, or six adults and three children. I mean, that would be a condition of the SGP.
Or if you have three bedrooms, no more than X number.
X, I mean, I mean, whatever, that would be something that you would look at specifically when they, because they have to come in.
So that would be customized.
It would, it would be tailored to that specific property. Just like you do with your BnBs now, if you put conditions on it. I just think that is, and as far as enforceable, there's very little that goes on in this town that someone doesn't notice. And you have a city administrator that can maybe cease and desist with this report. I mean, no, we don't go in large all the time, but I think you all have a good idea of people doing this.
So existing BnBs would then have to cease to allow.
Existence, existence of BnBs was, they'll have to come back before the council as an SGP.
They've never come before.
And they have never, but they will, once you pass the ordinance, they're going to have to come before you. So it will apply to any, anybody. Except for maybe the little Washington Spock who has come before you as a BnB. But they operate as an BnB. They already have an SGP as a condition.
The Washington Spock is going to be owners.
But the SGP will.
Doesn't crash.
It may, for, for look at, someone can, but it doesn't.
That's a different issue, but, yeah.
If, if, you know, they have an SGP, they have to, whatever. If, you know, they have an S U P, they have to, whatever. I'm just trying to actually... As a member of the public, it is...
So we would have to make amendment on zoning ordinance that we add to the use by special permit for Airbnbs, which I think is fine. I think it's a reasonable idea. They have to go through the S U P process. We would have to put that in the zoning ordinance as part of the process.
This is where we need legal counsel. I don't know if you can make some...
Well, it's actually, it's in this thing that we're adding this special use permit. So it's already in there. And yeah, okay.
But you're, you know, you're...
So they have to do a special use permit anyway, despite this.
So that's already in existence?
Well, it's already in existence, but one of the things that we don't talk about in the special use permit process that they have to do is the number of people that they're going to have.
But he is, she is saying that would be contingent of not coming in for your special use process. It would not be in the ordinance itself.
Because they have to...
Because they would be particular to the property.
Right, but then this gets back to the old question, right? So someone submits a special use permit, run an Airbnb. They need all the conditions, but it's, they're converting eight rooms into Airbnb in their ten-room house.
Well, you can turn it down.
You don't have to allow them to people, I mean, you can say that you can only have so many people, regardless of the number of beds.
I don't can ask any longer and care for them either. To categorize that one.
I'm not certain that that's correct, but you can turn it down.
Right.
And remember, this says the operator has to stay on the premise.
Right.
So if you've got a three-bedroom house, unless they're sleeping on the couch, you really have only two bedrooms available.
So look, if you said that means, from what you just said, that this goes into effect, but in order for this to, you have to have an S U P.
The order says that.
So...
Yeah, that's okay.
Like a question.
That's something you want to make...
Yeah, that's what we're talking about and it's there.
But I think the main issue that seems to be coming up from you and from Ray, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the capacity. Correct? There's nothing in this, in this that talks about a ceiling or capacity, right? That's your main concern.
Well, I mean, the underlying concern is, you know, we have a long history with B and Bs in this town and how careful the council was in allowing a B and B in a residential neighborhood. And there are limits on what a B and B can and cannot do. And they have the ten-person limit. What you are doing with Airbnb is you are making every personal residence in the town a possible B and B. So you're destroying what, possibly destroying what little residential capacity we have in the town. So I think you should be as strenuous on your limitations on the Airbnbs as historically you have been on B and Bs. And that's only fair to the B and Bs. Because what are these Airbnbs going to do? They're going to take away business from the B and Bs.
I appreciate everything you say. The one comment that you made is that we are requiring the owner to be in residence. So the fact is, I don't know if I would agree with you in saying that you're destroying the residential character. We try to be very sensitive to that point.
So I can't buy a house and turn it into just an Airbnb.
I can't hear you.
They said, so you're trying to avoid someone buying a property and turning it into just an Airbnb.
I understand that and I appreciate that.
So we also have run into the issue of what you can tell a person they can or cannot do with their residence. So you, and the town stands in some jeopardy of being sued about property rights that I can't rent out a room.
And you can't? You can sell the room.
Well, as the Airbnb, and by, we're trying to do the short-term transfer.
You're saying that it's going to affect your property value if you can't rent a room?
No, I am saying that if I own my house and I want to rent a room out on weekends and town says, well, you can't, you may put the town in some jeopardy about property rights and what I am able to do with my house. Because right now, if I want to take in a boarder, I could do it. But why can't I take somebody for the weekend? I'm just throwing it out. I go...
Well, you can't because there's a limit in terms of occupancy. I mean, in one, I'll give you an example. There were some VIP guests at the end years ago that had Secret Service protection. And they needed a place for the Secret Service and/or nannies to stay overnight. And I wasn't using my house that weekend. I said, sure, put them in my house. My next-door neighbor went to the zoning administrator and complained. And I got a letter saying, you cannot have short-term residence. I wasn't charging them anything, but I was told you can't have short-term occupancy of a residence in the town portion.
And this is meant to solve it?
Yes, and I appreciate that. But I think you, you're going to eliminate some future problems potentially by having a number, some kind of number. So when the next-door neighbor complains, you know, there were ten college kids from UVA at this house all weekend and it was causing a lot of ruckus and commotion. You know, you can say, no, you can't do that because there is a limit on the number of people that you can rent as an Airbnb and not have to call the national headquarters.
Well, I think that would be an answer too, yeah.
Whoever, when you came in, you were trying... I understand what you're saying. I do not, I would want to amend this to say, no, one or two people per bedroom. Forgetting about the occupancy.
You don't have to determine that way. You can say that the occupancy will be determined as a condition of the S U P. That's what...
That's what we took away. Would that satisfy you, Ray?
Yeah.
So nothing in the ordinance, but in the S U P?
That's for...
It's geared to the individual request?
As long as we don't get into the same catch-22 that we did with how many seedings you can have in a meal service. Because the ordinance didn't say what the definition is, so... No, that's fine. I mean, I think you're, I think you're on the right track. I, you know...
But do we also need to have a guide?
Do you have a guide?
Have a guide in terms of a number per room or some other aspect?
Well, you put in...
If you've got four kids, well...
I guess, following up on what you're saying. Scenario that I see is someone comes up with requesting a special use permit. That, how do we determine unless we go to the place itself and look at it as to determining whether they have four and a bedroom is appropriate or whether they're requesting a total of six in that residence for the Airbnb, for their special use permit?
It all depends on the pictures.
You don't know.
The town has...
We would have to hear the place. I could reach place. I wouldn't put it in there.
I think the only question is, if you leave it to the S U P, do you have legal protection or does it seem too arbitrary? And if it seems arbitrary, you need to put it in ordinance. I think it makes sense to do it, leave it to the S U P.
What does it refer to, to the?
The number. The number. I think the best way to determine the occupancy is through the S U P. But some might say that doesn't give the town enough protection legally. People say that's too arbitrary because somebody has decided from property to property without a rule of law. As long as we feel that we're protected doing the property, and if you have to ask, don't that? I think it would be that in the S U P, not in the ordinance. Because you're either going to buy a room, you say two-bedroom or three-bedroom, or you're going to go back to the town to your house. Because, you know, you've got five bedrooms.
Okay, so there's a house with... You can, I need your public hearing and delay your vote. Can you tell me to set it up?
But you approved this, right?
Yes.
Now you need to change the...
Why didn't you just say...
You're taking out the number too.
Why would we just make it the same as a B and B, no more than ten?
What if you have a six, eight-bedroom house? We have an eleven-bedroom house in the home. What I mean, what if you want...
See, that gets back to my point a long time ago. If I'm living on Casey Street, just take an example. And there's a house next to me that's got two bedrooms. And there's a house next to me that's got six bedrooms. I wouldn't really care how many bedrooms they have. I care how many people in the house.
It's a town.
And, you know, you could reason, say, you know, if your house here and right next door, I don't want ten people or more in there. I don't care how many bedrooms they have or even how large the house is.
Well, there comes my family not being able to come for Christmas. I mean, let's be real. I'm doing it here as well. I said that takes care of my children. My family can't come for Christmas. I mean, often their neighbors may have twelve people. You wouldn't even know it. I understand what the concern is.
There's a difference between family and short-term...
Well, you're not driving...
I mean, hell, we were on Airbnb and no charge for...
Yes, I know, but I'm just saying...
We've got something. I don't know.
I took the favor of having it decided with the S U P where you could say, okay, you have three bedrooms. So you could have six adults or four adults and two kids, or four adults and three kids. That would be a condition of the S U P.
And if we could, this covers it. Fred is asking the question of whether something else needs to be in here to protect the town from an arbitrary decision personally, personally. We like that person, but we know that person houses. I don't know. I just, I think this covers it, but...
If I can follow up on you. It seems to me there are three issues and I appreciate the public input. The issue number one is, in the zoning ordinance, there is no definition of what assembly is. And it seems to me that that would be an important thing to know what is meant by assembly. Because if you have five people, is it, is that an assembly? Is it twenty people, so on and so forth? So first of all, I'd like to go back to John Bennett, have a definition that we can look at in zoning ordinance for what is an assembly. Second is to look at limit to overall occupancy and to reevaluate that question with the town attorney. And the third is to look at guidelines to prevent what could be perceived as arbitrariness in case we have a future special use permit come before the town council. And it would be helpful to have some kind of guidelines.
If we do not adopt this, we know we have at least two airbnb's in the town at the moment. They can simply continue to operate as they are now and pay their taxes. That's correct. And so if we don't do this, it's the wild west, the airbnb's in Washington. I mean, it's seashells, but I just mean, right now, we have two with no rooms.
I have a question on what we're looking at as far as limitations per building, per individual application. For the junior department, health standards, would they have a limitation? Or the fire marshal, the fire department, would have a limitation on the number of occupants in a building?
I think, Fred, this issue of defining assembly.
I mean, I think, you know, because they're not counting the number of angels on the head of the pen.
Right.
The fact is, you know an assembly, like a street one. I would think that to define how many people it's under. The key point is, it's a group of people who aren't actually staying in the, in the building.
Right.
It's not about how many guests you have or how many occupants you have. So I would think we really don't have to go to the length of defining assembly.
Well, I hear your point is, there are a whole number of other things that are defined in there. And it was a point that I know Ray brought up because even under what Ray was talking about, you were talking about residence there. You were talking about having a group of rawest people who were staying at a place and you were calling it an assembly of people.
No, I didn't use the word assembly. I said, you've taken care of assemblies in this.
All right.
I'm just a bunch of people.
The way it's written, wouldn't the assembly, if you do decide to cap the number of people at a property, it says, assembly of persons using over logic.
Right.
Only using over logic. So if you do give a number, whatever that number is, to each individual S U P, that's, that's your cap on assembly as well. So you may not even need to find them.
Does anyone know what the Department, Virginia Department of Health, what the standards are for Airbnb? Because the standards for B and Bs is no more than ten people. And then Health Department will from, so state. We have the Virginia Department of Health.
I don't think, Mary Ann, when we looked at this, I don't know, I can't speak for John Bennett.
Because there may be a limit. I'm saying that they may have a limit.
When we looked at this from a planning commission perspective, we were looking on issues such as hygiene and the quality of the kitchen and so on. So those kinds of hygienic, ornamental things, we did not look at capacity. I don't know if Health Department does that or whether that's done through the, I know...
See, we get a permit...
Another thing is done through the planning department.
We get a permit from the Health Department every year.
It seems like that.
But I don't know, we should maybe find out if they do.
Yes, here. All those standards should be observed.
Anyway, I...
And so if they have standards, by number, they should...
Anyway, to what I was saying earlier, Mr. Mayor, I think that the public discussion was very beneficial, brought up several questions. Two questions in particular dealing with a, whether there should be a limit to overall occupancy. And second, perhaps as important or more important is guidelines to protect the town, also to prevent arbitrary or a perception of arbitrariness when special use permit comes before the council in the future. Go back to John again.
I have a question. In the, in the main, in the ordinance for law, it is passed, the guidelines are developed that attach to the perceived statute of law of your ordinance. And not written as part of this. That's just my comment. You cannot write it in here. You can solve that. And it doesn't solve the number problem, but it... And it doesn't solve the number problem, but it.
So is the planning commission, I go back and, I hate to do this, it's like going all over again.
Well, it's been six months, but it's another month. But I feel that some good questions were raised.
Yeah, it's a molly, it's a.
And we don't have a town council here tonight to be able to help give us an immediate response. And I don't feel comfortable going forward without having some say from town council. Sorry, town, the Eagle Council.
You can continue, or you can close the public hearing and wait.
When's the next town council meeting?
June 11.
June 11.
So we're not going to have a planning commission meeting before the next town council.
But you could, John.
Then you do this online. I mean, that doesn't mean bad. You could present something to your attorney.
And two of you selected somehow for a planning commission. Talk to John.
What's John get back?
I don't know. Not sure recently. I don't know why I say that. No, as you keep it moving.
Right.
That.
I can go ahead.
I think that's perfectly appropriate, if you and one of your colleagues wanted to sit down with John, he'd have to be, to me, I'd have to use.
All right, we will go ahead and do that. Follow his guidelines on it.
Has there been any investigation of confidential communities and their ordinances?
I recall that John Bennett had said he had heard a number of different towns and what they had been doing with their ordinances. So I think he had some experience.
But in a way, we don't.
Mary Ann, I bring up a good question and we suffer.
And the county is also struggling with this. But the circumstances are different for various reasons. Well, why don't we do that? If that's, so we will close the.
Wait, do you want to close the public hearing? Or do you want to continue it?
I continue.
All right.
So we need to each formally vote to continue the revision of the hearing.
So for the members of the planning commission, I would like to move that we continue the public session, public meeting session on this issue. This is a roll call vote.
You would have to be present until June 11.
Hey, I will not be present until June 11.
So the other thing which I should, the planning commission can hold, I'm sorry, John Bennett, the planning commission can close their public hearing and you can be done. But you can delay your vote. But you won't be at the meeting. So that doesn't mean.
I think what we're, it sounds like since two of my members are going to be going from the planning commission, and I think we're probably better off just closing the public session, unfortunately.
And I simply say, we could continue it. We're meeting again on, it was continued until the July meeting, I mean.
You can continue it till the July meeting.
Then that would be what we should do.
I would continue it to the July meeting because we have a meeting on June.
June 19.
So that's what you can do. And the council would have to do it as well.
So I guess we will move, oh, because that's just the planning commission.
All right, so you're moving to July, the, do you want to continue the, the public hearing?
So the planning commission is moving, or I move that the planning commission continue its public meeting until it's July, until the July town council meeting, which we will again have a joint session with town council. And do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have Caroline? Because I could hear her for sooner by a millisecond.
Okay.
Judy, Judy, how say you?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Right, so then it's up to the.
You have to, you have to add that same.
Council of Washington. I propose that we continue the public hearing on the subject to the July meeting along with the planning mission.
Second, high second.
Oh, fair. Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right.
It's a hard, it's a hard ballot.
And I have the town council meeting, July is July 9. It's the second.
It's the second, the 3rd.
July 9.
Okay, let's move on. Old business, remember election update? Remind people that anybody who wants to run for an innu offensive has to file on June 12th. I encourage people to seriously consider running. I think more, I think competition's healthy. Good to get fresh blood, as it were. Not disparaging anybody that's on council, but I encourage people to. If you will indulge me for a second or a minute or two, I guess I said pretty much most of what I had to say in the newspaper or the email, and or the email I sent out with regard to my decision not to run. Let me just say something. When I was in high school and college in the early, 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 early 1960s, I fell in love with politics, the Kennedy election, Nixon election in particular. And I read two books. One book, probably more than two books, but two books that impacted me. It's one by Robert Penn Moore, All the Kings Men. It's one of the greatest books about politics and this fiction, but it's so real, it's unbelievable by Robert Penn Moore. At the same time, I, I after read Teddy White's book on the 1960 election. And I fell in love even more with politics and media and journalism. So I ended up in the journalistic part, the media part. Where on the first day, I went to work at Newsweek. I sat down, everybody was reading newspapers and Time and Newsweek and this and that. And I thought, isn't this the life? They're going to pay me money to read and follow what is going on. And that was a good 35, 40 year run. I never really expected to get into politics per se until Gene Lighted encouraged me strongly. But I certainly never thought I was going to become mayor or elected anything like that. And it has been an extraordinary experience. It's been absolutely great. I am indebted to people in the council and the planning commission, ARB. I'm indebted to the citizens of the town and county. This discussion on the ARB and B is sort of frustrating because I actually never came to a conclusion, rarely. But nevertheless, it was a pretty good example of people in the public and ourselves getting engaged in a pretty good conversation and struggling with, around North Korea, but struggling with an issue here in town that's relevant. So to be part of that has been very, very special. I wouldn't want to push the ARB part of it all that much, but I think it did my. So it's, the ride's not over and the election is not until November. But I just want to thank everybody. And then I want to finish with a quick little story. As all of you know, we have four, many of you know, we have four kids, 10 grandchildren. They show up all the time and we run, whatever the hell we run on, long weekends, where we do not make money for sure. And these kids really like our house. Why not? They're not stupid. So the eight-year-old grandson hears from his father and mother that I am no longer going to run for mayor, therefore not be mayor. And his first response is, does that mean they've got to give up the big house? The president has to give up his house, right? And when assured by our son that we get to keep the house and they get to come and stay there, he was, that's quite happy. So it was a fun book and the whole thing. Anyway, so much for, thank you for indulging and talking about myself. Okay. Old business, council will consider possible expenditures to support the town interest in connection with the in-stock celebration. Patrick, perhaps you might want to.
I'm concerned myself with the case.
Should throw you out.
Right, I'll just be right near you.
Sit in the back row.
Yeah, sit, sit up in the other balcony. This is a conversation we've had for three or four meetings. At the last meeting, we talked about it and essentially approved this, sort of 99% approved it. But one of the, have something in writing, something more specific. I have, we have, I have from, not Patrick, but the person, mine, who is organizing this thing. And you will see on the next to last page, I think it's in there, those elements that the town would get in exchange for contribution $5,000. We've talked about this in the past, all very much in the context of how to, A, help drive more traffic to it, B, make people more aware of the town of Washington, C, make people more aware of what they can do in the county, which I keep emphasizing. To remind, the incident is only on Sunday, on a weekend, which there's Saturday and Monday. And this county will be filled with people. And the ability to market the town via the website and then the public relations efforts of the inn, I think is very, very substantial. And I don't know if people have any more comments. We essentially pretty much approved this contingent on getting this. Brad, you laid out, if I recall, at last month, four or five reasons why you thought it was a substantially good idea. Any chance you can remember the four?
No, sir. No.
I think, they're, they're incorrect. But I think more generally it goes simply to. It is a unique opportunity. It is so much better than what was done 10 years ago when the town simply ran an ad, paid for an ad in a magazine. I was a magazine publisher, don't know. This is, this has got a lot of value to it. But it's got the specific value that's been attributed here, who knows, in a certain paper. But I don't know whether we actually.
You actually have to do the formal vote.
Do the actual formal vote.
But fine.
Fine.
For $5,000.
All right. And then I will propose, well, actually, is there any conversation? More conversation? Any? Then I would propose that the town spend $5,000 in support of the in-stock with the purpose of driving people to this town, building awareness of the town, helping our distances in the town, raising our profile and practically taking advantage of efforts at the inn itself as a, which should be substantial. So that is my motion.
I second.
You second? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Patrick, you're glad back to table. Task force committee meeting update. Brad, you want to report on that?
Yes, sir. We have housing task force. Will you welcome anybody additionally who would like to join? We are having our first meeting, organizational meeting on Wednesday at 7 o'clock here at town hall. And then I understand that tourism is meeting Monday here.
That's Tuesday, May 29.
Tuesday, the 29th.
And also Phil Irwin is joining.
That's off to all ones.
It's Tuesday, not Monday.
Tuesday, May 29. I'll send you the email.
Sure.
Yes.
And I will, I will take it on myself to follow with the other three.
Business development.
June 6.
Yeah.
Four.
Business development.
Development, business development, June 6.
Yeah.
And I'll follow Brad on the other two.
Is that it? Okay. Last ARB vacancy and possible appointment. We, I talked with, and we had been approached by George Edman, resident of town. George, actually, several years ago, expressed interest in going on the ARB once he became more fully established here in town. George is a profession, is a tax accountant of some sort, which doesn't strike me as a great skill set to necessarily bring to this or at least on your resume. But he is, application to his art and architecture. He has produced a stunning book, eight or nine years ago, on Episcopal church architecture of all this. And he has taken numerous courses on very high end on the subject of architecture. So he's a, I think, a very strong, and a sense, those of you who know George, his sensibility, I think, would fit very well with the role in ARB. So we only, we got that on Saturday. And we can, we do not have any other applications. I happen to think he's a first rounder. So we can vote on him tonight, get, put him to work. Or one can say, well, let's wait and see if there's more additional interest that's seated and open for a couple of months now.
I think we're lucky to have this application. I'm the two.
So I don't, perhaps sound as enthusiastic as I really am. I think George would be terrific.
Yeah.
Push it too hard. So all right, so I will nominate him to go on the ARB.
I second.
You're on second, Mary Ann. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Done. ARB is going to play a fairly important role in this town, always has, but really is over the next two, three, four, five years, I think. And there will always be more openings, so there will be more opportunity to constantly have a look. All right, I think that is it of public forum. The great former council member and planning commission member, Gene Giddaugh.
Hi, I'd just like to express my thanks to you, John, for your years of service to the town, and how much you've done for it. And I'd also like to express gratitude to Laura Da for her decades of work, and behind the scenes, making things happen. I mean, we would not be where we are without Laura's dedication, so I want to say that.
Thank you.
I'd also like to express a little concern about the in-stock regarding parking. I've mentioned this before, and then I've talked to Laura about this, so when I went to many of the RAP-ins, it turns out they have gotten, they're renting the firehouse and the parking there for perhaps a weekend, so I think, I'm sure people who are more knowledgeable than I are already working on this, but that's something that will be a concern.
Who is this, Sarah?
Says I'm in charge of the Democratic York City. People come and go, and I think we can do an accommodation that we reserve a couple of rows, because it's not like we have a crowd of 50 at any one time, so...
The in-stock is talking 700 people.
Well, I understand that, but there aren't 700 parking places at 500.
Yeah, we have a gala for the Christmas parade and such things.
Right, so, but I just mean, you're concerned about the, you know, we can take 50 parking places and leave the rest, and I am assuming you're going to do something, perhaps in a parking lot across the street, with a trolley or a bus or something, so, but it's a good heads up, thank you, we'll work it out.
Any others?
I would say, thank you to the Planning Commission, the short-term rentals is not an easy thing to work out, and we know it's a lot of work, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, a lot is going into it, I think that's why there's a sense of frustration, people said, oh, it's hard, it's hard to... Any other moment, yeah, name?
Why don't we rent our planning, our town planning commission to the county?
That would require that the town planning commission wants to be rented out.
I don't think they'd touch that. But as usual, the seats are coming. Any, anything else? I know we want to close, but I just want to say one thing, I'm prompted by the work parking. I may be an idiot, but I spend a lot of time walking around this town, and about three or four weeks ago, I really got focused on, there's some parking problems occasionally, but one of the beauties of this town is there are three sizable parking, four sizable, sorry, what is it, parking spaces, areas in this town, that are essentially out of sight. One is the inn's parking spot for their employees, the second is the parking spot, also one by the inn, but behind the hostels, and then the parking area behind the county buildings. And between them, they hold something like 100, I bet you 130, 140 spots, that are in town, they're convenient, they're block away from whatever, they're pretty much out of sight. And it just so struck me, so I'm like, why matters of notice, because you don't want a town, you know, overloaded with, you know, and of course, it's a parking lot in Trinity Church, which is noticeable, is in the center of town, but it's about as attractive a parking lot as anything to the farm. So I think, that's just sort of an interesting thing to remember about the town.
Can I just ask a question, you're expecting 700 people or 700 cars?
People.
People, so more like 350 cars or that.
Yes, and not all at one time.
Yes. Okay, any, I think I've got a public here, public forum, if not, I am now. Anything else, or should we adjourn?
Second.
Done. All right.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.